Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We're going to start with a Pledge of Allegiance, but after that, I would just like to have a moments of remembrance for the Dunn family. Commissioner Dunn lost his mother today, so that's why he's not here, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Chairman Bohm?
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, seeing none, I'd like an approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agendas.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve and file the minutes of 1:319. Organizational meeting, including the exhibits for the 2019-2020 Standing Committee appointments.
Second.
Discussion on any of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item seven, the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the approval of the proclamation honoring Ken Forster's years of service on the Board of Road Commissioners and the Department of Public Works.
Support.
We will get that to him. He's not in attendance this evening, so we'll make sure we get that over to the Road Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Items, consent agenda, items A through G.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve items 7A through 7G, Adna Consent Agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any of these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Who's stepping in then?
Gallow.
Reports of standing special committees. Greg, I'm going to start with you.
None.
Carl?
Nothing this evening.
Howard?
Just a couple things really quickly here. Health Department, their certification passed overwhelmingly. I think they had like three areas out of 150 or 60, so that they had to look at, and they were just very minor, passed overwhelmingly. Park and Rec had a report from Friends of St. Clair River. They're, we're looking at renewing the stewardship agreement. They've been out working at Wetlands County Park, along the Riverwalk, and also Fort Craschet County Park and Columbus County Park, identifying evasive species and with volunteers going out and doing what they can to maintain the parks, putting in many, many hours. And I guess a special recognition to all of those volunteers that are so important to the success of our parks. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Greitop?
I'll take a pass tonight.
I've just got one thing. February 27th, we have our Blue Meets Green Large Retreat. As many of you know, I'm the co-chair of Blue Meets Green. We meet every two months. There's 35 to 40 of us. We have a focus group, which is consists of eight to 10 of us, that we meet every six weeks or so. It's a lot of the regional stakeholders. This is actually Phase Five. There's projects that have been submitted for consideration that will get pared down. They will be a local, and then they have particular ones that will be labeled as regional. And as part of our planning sessions, we had 92 people at our last one. We do them roughly every 14 to 18 months, and it really becomes, I think, a roadmap as far as what, A, the county works on, and what other the supporting agencies do. If you haven't been part, I know you've been part of it before, and I know Carl, but I would encourage the commissioners, you're more than welcome to attend, and it's really a half day. It's from 8 till noon, and then from noon to 1 to lunch, but it is the things that a lot of the, like I said, community stakeholders are part of, and if you haven't been, it's, I would encourage it, and it's really, you know, truthfully, it's probably arguably the biggest success that we've had countywide, you know, really emerged out of the bad economy, and it's been, you know, super successful. So, as I always like saying, it's not my bad idea, it's 92 other people's bad idea. So, when we, when we work on things.
Do you have a location?
It's going to be here, downstairs in the auditorium.
Okay. 8 to 12 on the 27th.
Yeah, 8 till, yeah, 8:00 AM till, and I'll have more correspondence and forward accordingly, so. Also, February 5th, you guys, it's the state of the state. Anybody that would like to go here, we're going to be taking a group over to that, so let me know. That's going to be, I know a lot of you have attended before in the past. Representative Hernandez has reached out, and he's going to, he's got an, you know, office over there in the Capitol Building. We're going to go, probably sponge off him, go see him over there, so.
Go see Lowers, too. He wants us in.
I don't think, I don't think he's got an office in the Capitol, though. I think.
He does.
Does he?
Yep.
Okay. And we'll reach out to Dan, too, but.
Yeah, he wants us to stop by and say.
Okay, okay. Great opportunity to, you know, spend some time, meet some people.
February 5th.
February 5th, yeah, and I'm not sure, let me know if you're interested in going, you know.
I'm interested.
We're working on getting, you know, a bus to, you know, take a group of folks over there, so. That is it. Item 10, any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none. Unfinished business. Seeing none. Let's go to item 12. We've got the animal control updates.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
And Gal. Oh, I'm going to share some of our accomplishments from 2018 with you, and a couple of things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. I wanted to share the numbers with you. I have our statistics from September through December, the months that I was there for the full time. I'll have our full annual statistics as soon as we turn them into M-DAR, but right now, I've got like a four-month period for you, the time that I was there. So, we did end up with a 99.5% live release rate for dogs, and I believe we had one dog we had to put to sleep that was extremely aggressive there, and then we had two cats that came in that were hit by cars that we had to put to sleep. So, we had a 96.4% live release rate for cats. For the whole entire four months, we ended up with an almost 98% live release rate at our shelter. So, at this pace, we will be no-kill at this time next year, and recognized by the Michigan Pet Fund Alliance that are harassed by them. We had 171 dogs and 36 cats adopted out of our facility, I'm sorry, taken into our facility, and then we had 134 animals adopted out. We sent 18 out to our rescue partners in town, and we had 51 animals returned to their owner this year, or in the past four months. So, we're doing really, really good statistic-wise. We've also had our transparency for the public with this. I know you guys have black and white copies, but we do have colored copies that we were hanging in our facility and posted on social media, so that it's, you know, we had good colorful graphics for everyone to see how well we were doing there, and the things that we've been accomplishing. That's our numbers. The other things that we have going on there, and I know you guys probably want to hear about licensing for a second, but I'm going to sandwich that in some of the other stuff that's going on. So, in the past couple of weeks, we did have our runs built there. So, now on the side of animal control, we have two fairly good-sized fenced-in areas for the dogs to run, so they can go off-leash. It opens things up for our volunteers that might be older, that can't take the bigger dogs out on leashes, so we have a lot more of our volunteers that are coming in and being interactive with the dogs, because they can run free in these fenced-in areas. And that's going to open up playgroups for us in 2019, which is multiple dogs in the same area playing together, wearing each other out. We know that they're going to be socialized with other dogs, exercises them, and then they sleep all night through the shelter, and it does stimulate their minds. They'll last longer there before they go cage crazy, and they'll be way more adoptable. We're really, really excited about a fenced-in area there, so. Also, our new sign got delivered yesterday, so we have a nice big bright white sign with our new logo on the side of the road, and it says, "Animal Control and Adoption Center." So, this is awesome, because it lets people know that, you know, it's not just a dog pound, all animal controls are looked at as dog pounds. So, this kind of opens it up and lets them know we're family-friendly, we have adoptions there, we're a full-service facility for the community. Now, we'll talk about the licensing for a little bit. It's been kind of a challenge implementing this new program, but we do seem to be dealing with the customer service portion of it pretty well at our, at our facility. We're down a little bit staff-wise, but we are processing licenses as fast as we can there. We have probably 200 to 300 phone calls that we've been fielding a day. We've got volunteers that are taking all of the phone messages, and Scott has been answering them all day long, every day. So, we are fielding a lot of the phone calls. We just sent probably close to 500 pieces of mail for the licensing to Treasury Department. They're helping us process the mail down there. So, we are getting it done. January is probably going to be kind of bumpy with the licensing program, but by the end of 2019, the entire dog community in St. Clair County, their licenses will reflect their rabies vaccination dates, and going forward, it'll be a lot easier for everybody. And the licensing program, which is there to represent the rabies vaccination, will actually have its true purpose, which is the life of the vaccination. There's a lot of unvaccinated animals in St. Clair County, because the licenses don't jive with the rabies vaccination. So, we're going to get everybody legal and up-to-date. We're going to have a couple of things that we implement this year to help with this. I have been talking to a lot of the community that's in the outlying areas, like K-PAC and Algenac. It takes a long time to get here from there, so we're going to do some licensing pop-up clinics in those areas, where we go down there, set up tents, a table, sell licenses to the community, do amnesty for some late fees, and try to get people that can't make it all the way in here, make it easier for them to license their animals, too. So, we'll be doing that throughout the year to help some of the outlying communities in our county. All right. Also, we did take them away from vets and townships this year. That'll probably be given back next year, but I can't even imagine having to explain to every vet, and then every township, and then having them explain, and all the dates that are being changed at the computer. We're just going to, we're going to micromanage it out of our office and Treasury this year, and then we'll expand it next year to make it a little bit easier for everyone to get their licenses. Okay, I'm going to pass by that for a second, then. All of our animals in the facility now are being vaccinated. They're being heartworm tested, combo tested for the cats, and spay neutered before they're adopted. This is eliminating the contracts that we had, and spay neuter deposits, and putting unaltered animals out into the community, just hoping that nothing bad happens or no accidents go on. So, we've eliminated that altogether. We don't have an in-house vet right now, so SNAP, and Sandy Kilby, and the vets there, and the Serenity Animal Hospital, and Dr. Karen there, have been spay neutering all of our animals, and Karen stops by once a week to do rabies vaccination. She's our legal vet of record now there. So, the community, SNAP and Serenity Animal Hospital, has helped us out tremendously getting our dogs and cats all fixed and vaccinated and ready for adoption. It's been awesome partnering with communities like that. We have our new ACO. She's been hired up. Her name's Stacy Bean. She came from Warren Police Department and Detroit Animal Care and Control. She is amazing. She is completely certified and experienced. She will be on the road Tuesday. So, she's been being trained for a couple of weeks, and she is ready to go. So, we've got our new ACO coming out. We have a new kennel attendant that's there on the weekend. Her name is Jody. She came from Genesee County. She has, she comes every weekend and cleans the whole place by herself, and that opens up the facility to volunteers to be able to come in and get all the dogs walked and the cats cuddled all weekend long. So, now we're seven days a week taking care of the animals with volunteers and staff. And then I do want to point out that we have Amy Berry, our vet tech, and Scott Forster, our ACO that's in-house, have, have been tremendous stepping up and taking care of things the past couple of months in the back of the house, with all of our intakes, our adoptions, making sure all of our spay neuters are on track. So, those two in the back of the house have been completely beneficial. I don't know what I would do without them. We've had a ton of volunteers that have stepped up and helped us out with our adoption counseling, and some of the other tasks that they can help with that doesn't get in the way of our union workers, so that has been awesome. The volunteers are amazing. We have community partners from outlying communities, like Flint City Pits. Their board member, Stacy Weiss, has been coming here regularly and building our enrichment program for the dogs, and helping all of the volunteers get on board with enrichment, and handling some of the higher volume of dogs, and the, like, more, the bigger, stronger dogs that we have in there right now. We also have streamlined our intake, our adoption, and our deposit process to cut down on waste and time. And then for future plans for 2019, our foster program will be implemented in the spring. We'll have community outreach to the schools that is starting in a couple of weeks. And then we have off-site adoption, licensing, and microchipping clinics that are already planned for 2019. You guys have questions about the licensing you want to ask?
Licensing, when you get it all done now, you can buy a one-year license, a three-year license?
Correct.
Not a two-year?
No two-year.
So, one or three, and everything will line up with the expiration of your rabies?
Rabies, correct.
Okay. Do you have any of your staff here tonight?
I have Scott here with me tonight, and then his wife Laura is a volunteer, Susan is a volunteer, I got Renee as a volunteer, so we have some support. And Scott's the employee that's here.
Good.
Just one. Howard?
Do you have any plans for identifying those people that haven't licensed their dogs?
That have not licensed their dogs? Well, we, in the past, it's been the census that has done it, but we're hoping that when we do the licensed clinics around the areas, that that will promote people coming to us to get their dogs licensed. If we did amnesty for late fees, that's going to pull a lot more people out that don't have the licensed dogs. So, we're going to try for the first half of the year to do clinics instead of the census, because we kind of want to, we kind of want it to be out there that we're serving our community instead of harassing them. And everyone that's come in that talks about the census, it's just been more of a negative, you know, on their porch on the weekends, on Sundays, bothering them. It's like, they, they look at it kind of like telemarketing. So, I was going to try a little bit more of a service to our community approach to getting people licensed.
And the reason I ask that question, obviously, if they're not licensed, they haven't gotten the animal vaccinated for rabies, and then it becomes a public safety issue, you know, if the, if the unlicensed dog bites someone.
Well, what we.
Is there any penalty if that happens?
If they're not licensed, or if they bite somebody?
If they, they bite someone and they're unlicensed.
An unlicensed animal will get a citation or a ticket for not being licensed. They have X amount of days, I think it's 10 here in the community, to have, to get their dog licensed, or they will, they receive a warrant out, like, they'll come and get them, so there's, it's a misdemeanor. So, they, I mean, they have that, they have that, the misdemeanor ticket.
You might want to go ahead and just renew that license. You know you're trying to skirt the issue.
We'll pass the hat later for you.
We have found that, it's not that the dogs aren't vaccinated, they're just not licensed. So, we, the last couple of weeks, talking, it's, it has been kind of cool talking to everybody that's in this community. I've been stuck in that office, so being out doing customer service, I have just, I've come across thousands of people now in this community, and the dog owners and such. And what I'm finding is that the vets in town don't really communicate that, like, that you have to have a license 30 days after the rabies vaccination. There's not, so many people don't know that. So, we're going to start doing education for, you know, letting the vets know, can you remind them when you do the rabies vaccination? Maybe there can be something that they print out on the vaccination certificate that reminds them to go get a license, but so many people didn't know that there was a deadline after your rabies vaccination. And because the licenses here are calendar years and not rabies vaccination, there are a ton of people who, like, their rabies expired in April, and now they are licensed, but no rabies vaccination, which is completely against what the licensing is for in the first place, so.
Any other questions?
Did you get an answer in all that rambling?
Amy, are you still using trustees out there?
Yep. Trustees on the weekdays, and then Jody, Jody solo on the weekends, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I really find it hard to believe that's all the licensing questions, you guys. Thank you.
We're simple. Item B, approval of county disbursements for November.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve county disbursements for November 2018 in the amount of $20,622,274.27.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
We don't, for an update, we don't need, yeah. Item C, approval of county disbursements for December of 2018.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve county disbursements for December 2018 in the amount of $10,638,976.87.
Second.
Discussion on anything? Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item D, the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee reappointment.
Mr. Chair, I would move the appointment of Bill Parkus to the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee, representing regional solid waste planning for a two-year term, expiring in 1231, 2020.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, the Merit CSLAC Design Agreement for Library Design Services. Did you want to talk about it at all, Allison?
Good evening, gentlemen. The Merit CSLAC Design Agreement is a contract for pre-design services for the library, main library building project. This will, there were 14 bids. Of those 14 bids, a committee of four individuals, two library board members, and two county administration staff members sifted through all of the information that was available, and they whittled down the bidders in two, three. Merit CSLAC floated to the top. Basically, all, all the companies were very qualified, met all of our needs, but Merit CSLAC had the better price point. This pre-designed contract will include site selection and development, as well as spatial requirements for our current and future program delivery, as well as some budget estimating services. The timeline will take us through into probably August, where we will receive a report from them after many public forums meeting with you folks and community members as well, and our staff.
Okay. Any questions for Allison? Roll call.
We need a motion first.
Oh, motion first, I'm sorry.
Chairman?
Yep.
I move that we approve the agreement with Merit CSLAC Design PLC for pre-design services and construction of a new main library in an amount not to exceed $29,500 for a term of January 1st, January 17, 19, 2019 through August 31st, 2019.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item F, the St. Clair County Library System Board of Trustees bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the changes to the St. Clair County Library System Board of Trustees bylaws.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G, the Airport Private Hangar Ground Lease for Hess.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the private hangar ground lease with Troy and Tamara Hess for $12,600 for a term from 1/1/2018 through 12/31/2047.
Support.
Just a dumb question for you, Kathy. Troy, doesn't he fly for the, he's a guy that you see running the helicopter around here. He flies, yeah, yeah, that's, okay, I've met him before. That was just, nothing to do with this, but, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry. We've got to go to a roll call on that. Let's back up. My fault.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item H, the Air Industrial Park Lot 24 Lease Renewal for Triple J Enterprises.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the Air Industrial Park Lot 24 Lease Renewal with Triple J Enterprises for a term of 7/1/19 through 6/30/49. Howard, you're not going to see that one.
I, I.
Support.
Any, any discussion?
I was sleeping.
Neither am I.
Roll call.
Oh, man. Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item I, the Air Industrial Park Lot 16 Lease Agreement and Consent of Owner.
Mr. Chair, I would approve the Air Industrial Park Lot 16 Lease Assignment and Consent of Owner for Mueller Properties LLC to D and R Development LLC.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item J, the Interagency Agreement between Community Mental Health and the Intervention Center.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Interagency Agreement between Community Mental Health and the Intervention Center for inmate mental health services in an amount not to
Support.
Roll call on that.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item K, the 2019 Dispatcher Training Funds App.
I would make a motion to approve the 2019 Dispatcher Training Funds Grant application.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L, the Letter of Agreement with Region 10 for the Reset Prevention Services.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 Letter of Agreement with Region 10 PHIP for RSAT Prevention Services for inmates in the amount not to exceed $104,750 for a term of October 1st, 18, through September 30th, 19.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian? Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item M, the Smith Creek Landfill Cell 4 and Cell 8 Construction Change Order.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the Smith Creek Landfill Cell 4C and Cell 8 Construction Change Order Number 3 in the amount of $91,836.
Support?
Discussion. We have Matt here if anybody has any questions.
Just, did we have a contingency built in and how much was that? What's the normal, 10%?
10% has been.
So, we'd be under that. Did we have a contingency, Matt?
We had a budgeted contingency of 10% for the project, so we're approaching that.
So, with the three change orders, we're at 9.3%?
That's correct.
We're still within the budget?
We are now, but I anticipate more than, it's likely we'll go over the 10% before we're done, just so you guys have a heads up on that.
Most of this have to do with that soft shell that's in there?
It has pretty much everything to do with encountering silt seams, wet soils, soft soils, and the like at the base of Cell 8.
Matt, well, did we do any pre-testing drilling in that area?
Yes, we did.
These, these, these didn't show up, the silt?
We did borings around the perimeter of the Cell 8 area, because when we were doing the borings, it was, we couldn't get down in the middle, because that's where we were storing all our stormwater for a long time, so it wasn't physically able to get a rig down in the bottom. That's where we seen the issue. We haven't seen it, well, we're not cutting down that far, but in the borings we did around the perimeter, the silt layer, which is, I think, the main contributor to these issues, we didn't really note that as being present. We went, it was clay all the way down, we hit the soft layers that we've discussed in the past, but we didn't see the silt pockets, which I think is, again, the contributing factor to make this, you know, the additional work we've had to do here.
Thank you.
How, how deep did you bore?
Those borings, I don't recall exactly, but I know they went past the cell floor elevations.
What's your best guess on how deep that clay bed is out there? Is it?
Oh, it's approximately 80 feet deep.
How deep?
80.
80 feet deep?
Yeah, eight zero.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt? Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item M, N, the Library System Internet Service Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement with Community Education Network for Internet Services for the Library System in an amount not to exceed $243,000 for a term of July 1st, 2019 till June 30th, 2022.
Second?
Yes.
This is extremely important. There are a tremendous amount of kids in school that do not have Internet access, and they find themselves going to the library. And if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, but you guys beefed up your Wi-Fi systems in most of the buildings to the point that you can actually use them from outside of the buildings. Kids are in the parking lot sometimes, even if it's after closing hours, they could still get in there to do their homework and things of that nature.
Yes. Our Wi-
It is secure because you do have, to a point, because you do have to use your library card number-
Correct.
-as opposed to going to McDonald's or somewhere.
Correct, yep. So, our Wi-Fi service is 24/7 now at each of our library branches, which is, you know, we have 11 across the county. They do have a bubble, so to speak, around each branch, so that you could, in the summer, sit outside on the benches that are available, or in the winter, in your car if you needed to. In the express purpose of meeting needs of students, for instance, on a Sunday when the libraries are not open or after hours in the community branches, but also to meet the needs of anybody who may be working second, third, or late, more early morning shifts when the library is not open. And the library system does filter our Internet service, and you do need to have your library card to log in, so.
Just going to, it's one of those things, I've sat on broadband committees, I went and testified over on behalf of AT&amp;T for the small cell bill. If you don't have this technology, you are not moving forward as a community, right? I mean, we've heard stories where people live, they've got to take their kids, they gotta drive three, four, five miles so they can get that service. And I, and when I spoke, I had a couple township supervisors that weren't happy with me, but I, but I explained to them, I'm like, how, who's gonna buy your house if you don't have Internet, the cell phones, these types of things, you know? And your positioning, I mean, it's just, you need these things as a community, you need them as a county. You're not, you're not gonna, some of these rural communities, man, it's, you're not gonna, people aren't gonna come there if they don't have these services. And a lot of people work from home today, those types of things. I know you've worked with some of the signal strength, you know, with the Verizons, and there's more improvements to come and things that are gonna happen. It's just so important that, that we have these things for St. Clair County from an economic development standpoint.
We've come a long way in 15 years, but 15 years ago, before I retired, we bought one set of textbooks for a classroom and one set for another classroom, and told the kids, "Go home and do it online," because we bought a license so they could get the textbook online. You don't have to buy the textbook, you don't have to carry the textbook, it's all there, which is fine as long as you have Internet service. And if you don't have it, then you have to go somewhere and get it. And like I'm saying, the libraries are relatively safe and a good place to go to do this kind of stuff. So, that's why it's so important.
Okay, enough. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item O, the Drug Task Force Manning Table Edition. Did you want to say anything at all, Tim?
Good evening. When we increased our milage for the Drug Task Force, it's been a process over the last two years, wrapping up employees, bringing on staff. We were conservative when we filled those positions, never knowing entirely how much you're going to receive in the tax roll on that increase. Working with Danielle, there's still funds in that Drug Task Force milage for another full-time deputy sheriff assigned to the Narcotics Division. So, that's what the Manning Table is. Through the milage, through the increase, where the citizens doubled it here.
Perfect.
Any discussion? Uh...
Need to make a motion?
Yep.
I would make a motion to approve the request to add a full-time deputy position to the Drug Task Force Manning Table.
Support?
Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item P, the Mental Health Court Manning Table Edition.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the request to add a full-time probation officer position to the Mental Health Court's Manning Table.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item Q, the Banking Agreement with Eastern Michigan Bank.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the agreement with Eastern Michigan Bank for Treasury Management Services for a term of 1/17/19 through 1/16/21.
Support?
Just out of curiosity, Carrie, I know this takes a little bit to shift things over and stuff, long before they, this comes online?
The last time we switched banks was back in 2005, and it took about six months to fully make the switch. There's multiple software programming changes that need to happen, and just transitioning those over. So, we'll start that process and moving over the accounts we can as we're able.
Okay, very good. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item 13, Administrator's Report.
As all of you know, Jeff Friedland, our Director of Emergency Management, has announced his retirement at the end of next month. His vacancy has already been posted, and that posting closed last week. I am currently in the process of reviewing applications and scheduling interviews with, so interviews will happen over the next two weeks. It is our hope to get somebody in, maybe with a one or two-week overlap before Jeff leaves for some training or cross-training. I've put together a panel to help me in the selection process. I have someone representing fire, law enforcement, EMS, and then represent, a representative from the EOC as well.
And how many applicants were there?
Um, I believe there were about 25. We had an excellent group of highly qualified candidates. I was actually amazed with the quality and caliber of the candidates we had, a lot local, and some from all over the country as well, with FEMA experience, Homeland Security experience. So, we've, we've got a great group to choose from.
Nice.
Carrie, where did you advertise that?
You know what? I'm not exactly sure. I give it to HR and then they work their magic, so I'm not sure. A lot of times, when it's specific positions like that, they'll push it out to different publications, especially if you're allowed to post it for free. I know everything goes on Indeed, that's one of the main sites, so other areas, I'm not 100% sure.
25 apps seems like a nice, nice number to get.
Yeah, especially for this, the specialized of a position.
Yeah.
Earlier this week, we submitted our first compliance report to the MIDC, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. We are required to do quarterly reports to continue to get our funding. You have already approved the renovations to the Marine City District Court. We are also working through the improvements that have to be made to our Port Huron Court, and that just has more to do with soundproofing, so most of that will be done by internal maintenance staff.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does that mean we're going to need to hire someone, a director, just to handle the paperwork on that?
Well, as-
I mean, thanks to state for laying that one on us.
As part of the compliance plan that was submitted to the state, we did ask for a position, a compliance specialist, that, that you did previously approve. Interviews have been conducted, and we do have a candidate that is starting on the 30th of this month, and they will be doing a lot of the compliance and tracking. Right now, internal staff has had that on their plate, so we will have a person dedicated to this, and they will also be working towards our compliance on Standards 5 through 8, the second set of standards, that we have to submit a compliance plan for that fairly soon as well.
Is this another unfunded mandate, or?
The second set of standards will increase our budget for indigent defense. The cost to us is about $1.1 million. This is supposed to be covered and funded by the state as part of the legislation. They do have to fund those increased costs, but just a rough estimate based on some of the changes that are required.
Who do we thank over in Lansing? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, speaking of Lansing and legislation, staff is also working through an implementation strategy and coming out with a cost out of legislation passed last year for paid sick leave. That did change in December. There were some changes made to the legislation. There are many exemptions on who is or isn't eligible, so we are working through to see which of our employees would be affected or potentially eligible. If they are covered by a union contract, the legislation does not go into place until their contract expires. So, right now, most of our contracts expire the end of this year, but we do have a handful of non-union employees that this could potentially impact, and that would have a budget impact on us as well. So, we are working through those, and we should have maybe some better, a better idea of what that will be in the next 60 days.
Carrie, what do they end up with on a final number for qualifying for the sick leave?
You, a part-time employee, would earn one hour of sick leave for every 35 hours worked. The initial legislation was 40, then a proposal knocked it down to 30, and they finally settled on 35. There are numerous exemptions. If you work less than 25 hours per week on average the prior calendar year, then you are not eligible. And if you are, let's say, a seasonal employee that works less than 25 weeks a year, those are also ineligible under the legislation. And there's a couple more points, so it, it gets a little tricky going through and looking at our 400 part-time employees to see who this actually applies to and trying to figure out how many hours they worked at the past calendar year. So, Danielle has been working through that awful project of coming up with a cost. Staff is also working through the impacts of the government shutdown right now. As of right now, we have received all of our payments for all of our different services. Many items are exempt and are still receiving it, but I did have a long conversation with the Health Department earlier today, and their WIC program is certainly in jeopardy if the shutdown lasts much longer. There has been some talk at the state level that the state would fund the benefits, however, they would not fund the staff costs. So, we're having discussions on how we will handle that going forward if this shutdown lasts for an extended period of time. We get about $7 million annually in federal funding that could potentially be impacted by this, so we're going through and looking at each individual program, especially the ones that employees are attached to, to see, to come up with a strategy to move forward, depending on how long this lasts.
Carrie, if you are, if you have a salaried employee that is federally funded, are they secure for the duration of, say, a given year? I would assume that that grant would cover a year as opposed to a weekly or a monthly?
It depends on the grant, if it's a reimbursement basis, and we get paid after the fact. Some of them, we get our money upfront. Some of our other grants, we've already gotten our allocation for, let's say, our immunization program, we've already gotten our money for the year. Others, we get, if it's a monthly or quarterly payment, those payments wouldn't be received. The assumption is, once the shutdown ends, we would receive those payments retroactive, which is what's happened in the past. So, we're kind of going on that premise, however, I know there's no guarantees. So, we're making sure we have contingency plans for those programs and that we're looking at them too, so we have as minimal interruption of service to our residents as possible. We received notice from the State Department of Health and Human Services that Bill Weston has been temporarily reassigned, and he is no longer the director covering St. Clair County. They weren't given, we were not given a timeframe of how long he will no longer be covering our county, but in the interim, we have the Genesee County Director will be handling St. Clair County as well. Earlier this week, we received notice that we received the GFOA award for our 2017 financial statement, so congratulations to Danielle and all of the accounting staff for their hard work and once again receiving that award. And lastly, told you it was gonna be long tonight. Lastly, there are numerous events coming up. I don't have all of the dates, however, I will have staff sound out, I'll email tomorrow with the dates for the MTA, EDA, Chamber, all of the annual lunches and dinners are coming up right now.
Glad you said that. MTA event is 6:00 on one of our meeting nights. I would propose to move that meeting.
Yeah, it's on our full, February full board.
Yeah, February full board. And the event's at Alexander's at 6:00 PM. I know our meetings, I don't know if you guys could do like a 4:30 thing, 5 o'clock?
4:30 or 5?
Because I, you know, I mean, that's a great event to attend, because everybody's there from the township level.
What's the date again, Jeff?
Uh, 21st, February 21st.
Let's do the 4:30, I would.
Do the 4:30, Howard?
Yeah, just add a little more cushion.
Is that a motion, Howard?
I would say move.
Support?
I can put it on your next month's agenda or your committee agenda as a formal action item for you?
Yeah, yeah, just let them know that's, that's where we'll do that at, then. And that gives everybody a chance, because at 6, the dinner, like you said, it's, it's a great opportunity to get everybody in one room at one time, so.
And that's all?
Make a motion, we receive and file the-
Did we vote on that, or?
No, we gotta do that at our next meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
Motion, receive and file Administrator's Report.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.
Miscellaneous business?
Oh, I'm sorry, miscellaneous.
I, I have-
Oh, do you? Okay, Howard, I'm sorry.
One item. And I should have maybe mentioned this earlier, but I would be remiss if we didn't mention all of the volunteers. I thought of that after listening to the presentation from Animal Control. And then I mentioned tonight at Parks, we have the Friends of St. Clair River, but we also have to remember the Friends of the Lighthouse, everything they've been doing. It has, I guess if I could say one thing over the last, I'll say 10 years, the number of volunteers that have stepped up to assist the county in so many areas, and sometimes we forget to appreciate and thank them for their efforts.
Okay. Receive and file.
Motion to receive and file packets that were sent to our commissioners and any other information presented.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
Support.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where's adjourned?